Please call the roll.
Harris.
Right.
Carlson, here.
Here.
Seiberson.
Here.
West.
Here.
Singy.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business today is we have four public hearings. First public hearing is Resolution thirteen twenty-five thirty-five amending the two thousand thirteen general government annual budget, library department, seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, and the port department for sixty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for some grants we're accepting. Is anybody here to speak to that? Seeing none, we'll move on to our second public hearing, which is Resolution fourteen twenty-five thirty-six amending the two thousand fourteen general government annual budget, fire department three thousand five hundred, another grant. Is there anybody here to speak to that? Seeing none, that moves us down to public hearing ordinance thirteen seventeen forty-seven, increasing water rates. Anybody here to speak to that?
Yes, sir.
You bet. Come on up.
Hello, everybody. I'm Paul Seer from EC Phillips &amp; Son here in Ketchikan. And just wanted to come in and ask for a little bit more time to work on this whole water thing. I was rather surprised when I received an email on the twenty-third of December saying that, you know, there was a new ordinance coming out. In the email that, the cover email that I got from the water department, it just said there was a twenty-two percent increase on the way. And then tried to open the attachment, couldn't. Open gifts, you know, did the family thing. And then this week, opened it up, finally get that attachment opened, and it's a twenty-two percent increase every year for the next ten years. And...
No, it is only a twenty-two for the first, uh, one year. It's not for a ten-year end. I mean, the management has recommended that we do that, but in this ordinance, it's twenty-two percent for next year. Correct.
Well, it read that way, and so we were shocked by that, but even twenty-two percent for this year, we'd like some time to, to discuss it and, and get back with the water department and get back with the other members like Mr. Seiberson. And we've had some meetings and, and continue on that dialogue and come up with a plan for this.
Excellent. Anything else?
Nope, that's all. Thanks.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak to the water rates? Come on up, sir. Mr. Archibald.
Adam Archibald, reside at three thirty-two Madison. Excuse me. I'm representing the airport. I just wanted to kind of relate to everybody that over the last four years, the airport's seen a fifty percent increase in the water rates. Now, we're looking at another increase here. And as, as I understand it, there is a statement discussion that there might be even a possible another twenty percent intra, or increase on the rates to accommodate for the sewage dilution system. The airport's requesting that we have a little delay in this so we can look at this better and try to resolve some of these situations, these issues. The airport proposed an idea of possibly using a watershed to help to supplement the, the dilution valve for the sewage system. As I understand it, that was not really responded to. And we also asked for some more testing of the, of the sewage dilution to see where that's at, to see if we can come to a better level as to the water usage that's required for that. And that's all pretty much I have.
Any questions for Mr. Archibald? Hey, thanks for coming in.
Actually, could I also speak for myself also?
You bet.
Recently just got this letter in the mail about the water. Had a tributude, and it's a warning letter for those of specific populations. Routinely, I, I get, and I assume everybody gets, the letters about the haliotoxic acids and all that, warning letters saying that if you are at risk, you need to probably consult a doctor or, or that kind of thing. I'm not sure what the federal requirements are. I know sometimes federal requirements are overreaching. I'm not a scientist. I don't know. But it's just kind of, pardon the pun, but hard to swallow a, a tax rate increase when you're getting these letters in the mail also.
Thank you.
That's all right.
You bet.
Thanks.
All right, we're still on the water. Anybody else want to address the water? Seeing nobody else on the water, um, public hearing, we'll, um, go out of that one and go into the public hearing ordinance number thirteen seventeen forty-two, increasing wastewater rates. Is anybody here to speak to the wastewater rate increase? Seeing none, we'll close that and brings us to communications. Um, I think we had a substitute motion on two-two-two five-eight-two. And that was about it. Persons to be heard. Trevor Shaw, start us off.
Trevor Shaw, one zero six-four-nine Poff Road. I am here speaking as a private citizen and not as a representative of the Ketchikan Gateway Borough Board of Education. First of all, I would like to recommend that the council appoint Dick Kous to fill the vacancy on the council. I believe he has the experience and the overall knowledge that, and I believe that he's the best person to fill the seat. Also, I would like to speak to the sales tax increase that happened at the last meeting. There have been people coming up here for several weeks now discussing the budget, sales tax, fees increases, things like, of financial nature. I think it's kind of, it worries me that the city council raised the taxes without first looking at the spending cuts. And I think, I think that there are some ramifications there because you can't have one without the other. There needs to be the balance. The city council, just like the people, needs to give some, take some. The city council has been taking, now they need to give a little, look at spending cuts. In reference to filling the KPU electric division manager position, I think a hundred thirty-three thousand dollar salary is a little too much. That is more than twenty-four governors throughout the rest of the United States make. That is more than what the governor of Florida makes, and the state of Florida happens to have twenty-six times as many people as the state of Alaska, and we're talking about one little city. I also think that Mr. Amelon's salary of a hundred seventy thousand dollars, even though I understand that he managed both the city and KPU, is a little much. That is, if he were a governor, he would have one of the top ten salaries, and that is equal to, if not more, than the governor of California's salary, who makes approximately a hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. And there, in the state of California, there's four thousand and thirty-five times as many people than in the city of Ketchikan. So I think that's something that we need to look at, as to can we really afford to pay that much? I think that you're doing a fairly good job managing the city, but I, you, you can't justify paying somebody that much to, to manage a city of nine thousand people. It just doesn't work. I think the problem with what's going on and is that people I've talked to, whether it be about the borough assembly, the city council, the school board, is they're like, seems like people who serve on those bodies, when we're talking to them, they're normal people, but when they get up there, they kind of go into their own little tunnel vision mode and are out of touch. I think that's the biggest concern, is that public officials are seen as being out of touch, especially when they are like, okay, we're having budget problems, let's just raise taxes. Well, I think there are spending cuts that need to be made as well. And I, I think that's an overall issue of accountability and trust, is that if we're going to, if, if we need to do something to stabilize the city, and let's show some goodwill towards the people. If we need to raise the sales tax, if it's absolutely needed, so be it. I understand it's only seasonal, but the locals are still going to have to pay it. But I also think there needs to be some significant cuts made. I prefer not to touch people's jobs because we, we don't want, we don't want to cut anybody's job. We don't want to send them home unemployed. That's, that's not the, the way to go about it. But I think there needs to be a positive boost in the relationship between the city council and the people as a whole. And so I, I think that is the overall message that I'm trying to bring tonight.
Any questions for Trevor? AJ.
Got a list of those cuts we can look at?
You know?
I know on my part, I've done as much as I can to look, find cuts. I just, you know, if anybody out there, and am I just correct in this to you, has an idea, a, a good idea, it's hard to come up with, of how we can cut the budget, please let us know. We could always cut again, you know, just because we've done the budget stuff.
Well, you know, I think, I think the cutting, it's, it's a hard decision to make. You've got to go through the budget, and I, I'd be more than willing to go through the budget and say, yeah, we could cut this, we could cut that. But I think it takes, takes all seven, eight of you to get together and say, okay, this is what the people want. Because people have been coming up here for weeks saying, we need to look at spending cuts. Well, then it needs to be done. Whatever those spending cuts may be, I'm not in the position to say, tell you what those are. That's why you were elected. I think that's...
Anything else for Trevor?
The main point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Terry Wanzar.
Good evening, council members. Terry Wanzar, four thirty-five Hillcrest. I'm here to, first of all, congratulate you on the admirable job that you've done on remodeling the city hall. I think it fits with the character of the town, the, the colors, the design, the windows. I really, especially like the way that the exit stairway was treated. It, it shows well. The marquee is first cabin. I mean, thank you very much. I think it'll do a lot for Ketchikan. Uh, the second item I have is the sales tax issue. I'm not for it. Uh, being in the hotel business, we also pay a transient room tax, so that'll bump us up to eleven and a half percent. Our major industry in Ketchikan right now is the visitor industry, and penalizing people where they'll have to pay more to stay in a hotel room, I think is detrimental. I think that, uh, well, when the transient tax first started, it was, it was a marketing tax to attract people to come to Ketchikan, and that tax, in, over the years, has gone into the general fund. So I, if it was specific, I don't know how to address it, and I know you have a real challenge with the, with the budget. I just don't want to chase people away from coming to Ketchikan. But my main, my main concern here this evening is, and the reason I'm appearing before you is that I would really like to see you appoint Dick Kous for the, for the city council seat. This man has retired here in this community from the Forest Service. He has sat on the borough assembly and the city council. Every organization and meeting that I am involved in, every legislator or event that happens in Ketchikan, Dick is always there. And those of you that know me know that I collect things, I collect historic memorabilia. Uh, one of the things that I have been saving for a long, long time, when the pulp, pulp mill went down, there was a major, a major effort to try to bring the timber industry back. And this gentleman here, he carried around this sign in his truck for two years. Jobs. He cares about this community. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Terry. All right, that brings us down to Lynn Lawrence.
Lynn Lawrence, fifty-seven sixteen South Tungus. I'd just like to endorse the remarks you just heard regarding appointing Dick Kous to the council. Dick, of the three candidates, and you have three, I believe, excellent candidates to choose from, but Dick is the only one of the three that ran for reelection, and he's dedicated his, his retirement to working for the community. And so I urge you to appoint Dick tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Russell Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and council members. I would like to speak tonight in opposition to the seasonal sale tax increase. I feel like as a company that owns and operates tours both inside the city and in the borough, those operators are already under significant amount of pricing pressure, particularly when it comes time to deal with the cruise ships. We had an instance recently where we tried to up our tour rate by less than two percent after a five-year flat pricing, and it was just outright rejected. And it was a two-dollar increase on our tour. So when you look at something like that, and then you look at adding on an additional one percent in the summer, any operator that's dealing with the cruise ships has already negotiated two thousand fourteen rates with the cruise lines. And so as you look to who's going to be paying this tax, at least this summer, and probably summers into the future, because I doubt businesses are going to be able to pass those on to the cruise lines, those taxes are going to be borne by Ketchikan business owners. That's not going to be something that's going to be passed on. Stuff that's bought in the stores, obviously, is different, but when you're talking about businesses that are providing tours, I, I think the, a lion's share of that price increase is going to be borne by, by tour operators and Ketchikan business owners. I think I'm also just, you know, oppose also to the concept of a seasonal sales tax. I feel like the reason we're in, some of the situations we're in is because city voters have decided they wanted new things. They want a nice library and a fire hall, and the borough voters voted for pools, and then we, we have nice things and nice facilities. And I feel like when we vote for those things, we should be prepared to pay for them. And if the sales tax increase is essential, and it's something that now we're going to be required to pay for because we spent beyond our means, then I think the sales tax should be enacted for the year. And I'm not a big tax proponent, but I feel like, why are we going to go out and gouge those people who are already paying the lion's share of the sales tax and who are coming here, spending significant amounts of money and driving the local economy? It just seems like it's a little bit counterproductive. And then, as somebody who prepares my own sales tax report and submits it, I just think this is a nightmare paperwork-wise. We already are required to keep track of, of myriad of things when we're preparing sales tax, including single sales over a thousand, and sales to government entities, and sales to, to tax exempt individuals and other exemptions, and to try and now have to keep track of, I sold something in March, and now it's been returned in this new tax period, or I sell something in, in September, and now it's returned in October, and I've got to keep track of all that paperwork-wise and to report that, and to be able to refund customers, just seems like one extra burden on top of, you know, what already seems, you know, it takes a long time when you sit down in a big business that's generating a lot of revenue to sit and to work through a sales tax reporting, and this is just one extra thing to add time onto that. So I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Any questions for Russell? Thank you, Russell.
Thanks.
Mary Wanzar.
Hello, Mayor and council members.
Welcome.
Mary Wanzar, four thirty-five Hillcrest. I too am here to speak about the sales tax increase, and I oppose it completely, but I also would like, if you do enact it, have you consider that you would exempt rentals. We've heard how it affects tourism, we've heard how it's going to affect hotels. It's going to be a nightmare for rentals as well. And I know that you've, our bookkeeper, Mauro Dell, submitted a letter outlining a little further of how the accounting will be such a headache and expensive. Just to summarize, it'll be costly for the landlord and/or the property manager to implement in addition, you know, by accounting fees. It'll be confusing for the tenants to change their rent every six months. I'm not even sure if a tenant is in the middle of a lease, if I can legally increase their rent because the sale tax has, has increased. The landlord may have to absorb that as well. And, and the cost of living in Ketchikan is already high. Not only we're increasing every tenant's rent, at the same time, we're increasing their utilities because we're going to be increasing the water and sewer that they pay on their KPU bill. If they pay their own oil, they're also going to be in pain more because the tax on that will be increased as well. So I, I just hope that you don't increase it at all, if we can find other ways to, um, your budget. And I would also like to show my support for Dick Kous. He's done a great job, he has experience, and I hope you'll consider appointing him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's the last person on the list. Is there somebody else who wants to address the council item that wasn't on the list? Come up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Scoblick, thirty-eight oh six Fairview Avenue. I work for Trident Seafoods at seven-twenty Stedman. And I'm here to talk ever so briefly about the water issue. I apologize for being late. I was coaching Ketchikan Dribblers League. At any rate, as far as the water issue is concerned, this has been going round and round for a while, and I guess I'm here tonight to appeal to your better senses and ask one more time to hold the phone. Where's the fire? Hang on a second. Because we were given notice during the holiday break, and there was a first reading that nobody knew about, and we were told that we would be able to work with the city and the council at our last meeting, and never had another meeting after that. So I feel like we're a little bit out of order here, and I would just like to appeal to your common sense and say that we're not in a rush. This still can be implemented. We're not saying we don't want to increase. We do want to cooperate, we want to be part of the process, as we have been. But all of a sudden, kind of out of left field, this happened, and maybe it's because we were attending to other business, like fish, or our family, or the holidays, or whatever the reason may be. But this has caught us by surprise, and we'd like a little bit more time to work with you on this, so, thank you.
Thanks, John. Any questions for John? Thank you very much. Anyone else wants to draw, uh, come on up.
Anne McKim, two-five-eight Hennigan Street. I wasn't intending to say anything but some of the topics that have been brought up, I wanted to share my opinion. I agree with the sales tax issue as a landlord, as a business owner, and as a citizen, I agree with what Russell had to say in that we have taken on these buildings that I am for a sales tax across the board, in, a slight increase across the board annually, or the whole year. I am not opposed to paying half percent or one percent more to help take care of the facilities that we've been given. Again, as a businessperson, it's also a headache for my bookkeeper. I'm not in a seasonal business, but it's going to affect what we do, it's going to affect my tenants, it's going to affect my customers. So I have two different businesses that I now have to pay a bookkeeper more to deal with the paperwork side of this, and I would just like to see it just a tax cross that everybody gets a slight increase to help pay for these. And I also would like to put my vote in for Dick Kous. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close that persons to be heard. Thank you, everybody. Um, that brings us to, before we get into the consent agenda, let's go and move item seven-eight-three, selection of candidate to fill vacant council seat. We have three people that have applied before, Jackie and Mickey and Dick. What I'll do is ask if you guys want to address the council again, if council members have questions, we can ask questions of you. Um, we'll, this year, at this time, it's a little different. We have paper come out, council will select two out of the three, their number two, or their two top choices. We'll give a minute, have Katie tally them, and then once we have the top two, I've been thinking how to do it, I was thinking it's just have the top, if there is one person with the most votes, I think I'll ask for a motion for that one to start with, and whoever had the second amount, we'll vote on that after that, if that didn't pass. I'm just trying to think of the fairest way to do it. Jackie, Dick, or, well, sorry, Dick, Dick, did you want to address the council? Do we have any questions for Dick? Jackie, do you want to address the council? Any questions for Jackie? Mickey? All right, any questions for Mickey? All right, council members, mark down your top two, pass them through over here to Katie, and then we will stand down for a couple minutes while she tallies it all up. You bet.
So then, I guess I don't understand how you're working it out.
After she tallies it up, if there's one person with the, with the most votes, I'm going to ask for the motion on them first, then if that doesn't pass, I'll ask for the next one. Pass them on to... We got one more to go. We'll be at ease for a couple minutes. I'm already tired of this.
You were thinking that way, I didn't think of bringing some beer up here. I love some bottles. Let me wrong, I know, but raising money for the council.
That's nice. Yours? Yeah. I know, the grandkids are great for the holiday. Yeah, because I'm kind of getting out of the spirit of it, really, even though he's just...
Oh, my God. Sorry.
Having him looking at the tree.
Really sad.
How many grandchildren do you have?
No, I mean...
That's even better. I've got two step-grandchildren in Washington State, and I didn't get to see them. Oh, that's nice. Well, she's old enough to wrangle the other one, too.
Okay. Uh, the top voter is Dick Kous. Do we have a motion for Mr. Kous?
Your Honor, I still move that we appoint Dick Kous.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Harris.
Put it on me first. I ain't afraid of Dick, I'll vote you.
Singy. Seiberson.
Yes.
West. Carlson.
Yes.
Olsen.
No. Okay, that passes four to two. Jackie and Mickey, thanks for being involved. Hope you continue. Um, Dick, you're going to be joining us again. If you could come up to the podium, we'll just swear you in. Oh, yes. We'll do the oath and bring you up to the thing and get started here.
You, Richard Elkhus, solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and the laws of the state of Alaska, and the charter of ordinances of the city of Ketchikan, that you will perform the duties of councilmember of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska, upon which you are about to enter honestly, faithfully, and impartially, and will do even an exact justice to all persons to the best of your ability.
I will.
Judy, you're moving?
You mean they don't like my chair?
Well, you've sat there a long time. You deserve to have a back.
All right, come on up, Dick. Are you ready, Mayor Williams? I'm ready. I'm ready. I'll laugh. One moment. I got people hounding me on the phone.
Tell them to watch your eating.
But they are, they call and say, "Well, it's not on this. It's not on this." Oh, I can't hear you. I don't get any substantial questions. There's always something wrong with them. All right, all right. So, Dick, welcome back. Let's get moving into the agenda. You're up to speed, so we're not going to worry about it. That brings us to a consent agenda. Yes. You bet. Very good. You bet. All right, that brings us to consent agenda. Before she reads the notice, I was looking at 781 and 782 to add to it. Do we have any objections on that? And that's an amendment to the Dowell contract on the medical center, and then the hazardous materials stuff for PBS. If there's none, I'd like to add that to it.
Do we have to discuss number four?
Say again?
Number four be on the consent agenda.
Well, if you guys want to put it on there, otherwise I was going to leave it off. Do you guys want to talk about it? Anybody have objection to putting number four on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll put it on there. And that's acceptance of asbestos-containing materials. If the owners of the Knickerbocker knock down the Knickerbocker Hotel, they'll put it up at our asbestos cell up at Deer Mountain. Okay, do we have a motion to consent? So moved. Do we have a second? All right. Madam Clerk, can you read items?
Approval of finished regular meeting December 19, 2013. Budget transfer contract number 1238A, change order number four for the City Hall project with Dawson. Budget transfer for contract number 1104, amendment number four for the City Hall project again with Bazan and Associates Architects. Amendment to transportation worker identification credential services agreement with Morpho Trust USA Incorporated. Resolution number 132535, amending the 2013 general government operating capital budget with more money for the library and the fire department. Resolution number 142536, amending the 2014 general government budget with more money for the fire department. Contract number 1250, amendment number one with the agreement with Dowell for the hospital, Peace House Ketchikan Medical Center project. Professional services agreement for Ketchikan Medical Center hazardous materials design service with PBS Engineering and Environmental Inc. And acceptance of asbestos-containing materials waste from the demolition of 419 Dock Street, otherwise known as the Knickerbocker Hotel at the Deer Mountain landfill asbestos cell.
Anybody have a question? CNN, call or roll?
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz? Harris? Severson?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
And that passes six to nothing. That brings us down to old business, six.
Your Honor, seven. Just a reminder.
Say again?
Wasn't it seven, nothing?
Yes, seven, nothing.
Oh, I'm so... Oh, yeah, I'm so used to six, I'm sorry. It's nice to have seven. Thank you.
They've already come out of trouble.
All right, that brings us down to unfinished business, 6A1, ordinance 131743, seasonal sales tax levy of four and a half percent from April 1 through September 30th in second reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the City Council approve in second reading ordinance number 131743, increasing the sales tax levy to four and a half percent for the period April 1 to September 30th, and decreasing the same to three and a half percent for the period October 1 to March 31st, by making amendments to KMC 30402O entitled levy of tax, subsection B of KMC 30404O entitled tax added to sales price, and subsection D of 304130 of KMC entitled use of proceeds of sales tax, repealing subsections E through G of E04130 and establishing effective date.
Second. Moved and seconded. Do you want to address it, Marty?
Yeah, I got a letter from Susan Peters, who again wanted me to say that she does object to the sales tax. And I've got a question. What is the difference in the sales tax returns projected to be if we did just have a half a cent sales tax for the year, rather than having it stagger between the one and back?
Bob, you got an answer?
The seasonal sales tax would bring in about 1.9 million. The just increase in the sales tax from three and a half to four percent all year round would bring in about 1.4 million.
Could you repeat that second one? I couldn't hear. 1.4?
1.4. Now, the first year of operation, because we can only make it effective April 1, it would be 965.
Understood. Thank you. Anybody else?
No, I'd just like, I'd like to hear some discussion on it, but I think I'm going to make an amendment to have it not adjusted seasonally, and just to do it a half percent year round, just to see what other kinds of support that we're dealing with. But I want to hear what everybody else says.
Anybody else? Bob?
Yeah, Your Honor, I've talked to a number of people about this, and of course, looked at other states that are doing seasonal sales tax in other cities. And the drift is, of course, that having a sales tax for a city time does create some issues with bookkeeping, and what they found, one of the places in Florida is that people just forget about it or something, and then they end up delinquent, and then they end up with, you know, audits and fines and stuff like that. And so I I was originally proposed to be a half percent for the year long. I think I'm more in favor of that. I think it covers our costs this year, understanding that we do have cost issues to think about in the following years, but we need to continue to look at our budgeting process. And after this year's review, we'll know more about what we can do in 2016. So I think I'm in favor of the proposed amendment. Marty might make the tax for the...
Guess that's probably just making amendment, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I move to amend it that we'll do a half a percent sales tax year round instead of a seasonally adjusted sales tax.
Madam Clerk, do we call that amendment, or would that just change the whole? Should we just consider that?
You can, yes, you can make that amendment, because right now, the motion is for, to raise it to four and a half percent for a certain period.
Okay, so it just changes, okay.
And so you're just amending it to four percent.
Okay, we... All right, we have an amendment to make it a half percent annually instead of full cent seasonally. Anybody else want to discuss it? Dick?
Is the amendment going to carry the motion?
Say again?
Are you going to have the amendment carry the motion?
Yes.
Well, anyway, I, yeah, I need to make a comment, and you guys may regret what you just did, but I don't like the sales tax. I mean, I know we need to spend some money, and I watched the budget process, and quite frankly, I don't think we dug into that budget well enough, and I could have found a half million dollars. But I think we could have delayed, not spent, but delayed. And so, right now, I really think, like, and I think KJ alluded to this, that we can go back and amend this budget if we want to. And so, and that may be what some of us try to do later on, is to make some amendments, but until we do that, I really don't care to pass a sales tax. Because I don't think we did a fair job for the public. So anyway, but I do agree with Marty and them, if we do it, it's year long, it's not seasonal. So I'm with you there, but otherwise, I'd probably not be passing the motion.
Anybody else? Matt?
Yeah, I was the proponent for the seasonal, and I still am. If we make this half percent sales tax, just based on numbers, for a town and an economy that is based pretty much solely around a tourism-type industry, or a tourism industry, we built our, we are now building our town, we're now building most of our infrastructure downtown, and everything outside to center around the cruise ships. If we go to a year-round sales tax, it will make it easier for us, just in terms of bookkeeping. But we heard a lot of comment, and I heard a lot of comment, and we all made comment about the impact on lower-income families. If you do one, assess year-round sales tax. And 50% of that tax, or one-third of that tax, is going to be, is going to be collected in the months when there's no tourism industry, and the other two-thirds is collected when there is. Just going off of that logic, the local population, which, and we've seen the reports about our poverty levels in town, are going to pay two-thirds of that amount. If we do it seasonally, it's at least a 50-50 split. The other issue is that if we do this year-round half percent, we're going to short ourselves about $400,000 to $500,000 this year. Because we put in, I think we put back more than, we put back one and a half million from the original proposal, roughly, and going...
1.1.
1.1, okay. So we're going to short ourselves $200,000. The other thing that we have talked about greatly is we need to look at a storm drain system that protects our community as we can, as we get in rain, and we get a lot of runoff, and we're not going to have the money to do that if we do this plan. It's not going to cover those costs. So I'm against it. I support the seasonal sales tax. I know I am lucky enough to travel, and I know sales tax does not weigh one cent in where I buy anything, unless I'm on the border of a state where gasoline's cheaper. And that's about the only thing. I don't go to Chicago and say, "I'm not going to buy this here. I'm going to go buy it in New York," where it's might be a cent cheaper. And I'm just throwing those numbers out. I have no idea. But I don't make that decision based on it. I don't research sales tax, and I don't think I'm in the minority. So I support the seasonal increase.
Anybody else? Who are you with? I'm just glad Marty made that. I understand where Matt's coming from, but I just feel more comfortable with a half cent for annually, so... Let's call the roll.
Can I make a suggestion?
You betcha.
I know that you said you would say the amendment would carry the motion, but...
You don't think so?
Can you, I would just leave it open. To declare that after the motion, or after the roll.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Well, you've got me in a corner. He's... If it's going to carry us one thing, it's not going to carry us another.
Well, by Roberts, it shouldn't.
Okay, why? No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
This is voting on a half percent here.
Correct.
Olson?
No.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
That fails, three to four. So that, we have the main motion back on there, correct?
Yes.
All right. Anybody have anything else? Call the motion on the main motion.
Zingy?
Motion on the main...
Call the vote on the main motion.
The original motion.
The original motion, which is the seasonal.
No.
Kuz? West?
Yes.
Harris? Severson?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Okay, that passes four to three. That brings us down to 6A2, ordinance 131742, increasing wastewater rates by four percent, second reading. Okay, do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
You bet.
Move the City Council approve in second reading ordinance number 131742, increasing wastewater rates by four percent, providing a date for a public hearing. Is that it? No, that's not it. Yeah, it is, and establishing effective date.
Second.
Matt?
I think it's all been said. It's something that we need to do so we can balance the books.
Anybody else? Call or roll?
Carlson?
No.
Harris? Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. That brings us down to unfinished business, 6B1, ordinance 131745, increasing water rate, second reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any possibility we can back this off for two weeks while we talk to the fish processors and all those guys? It's going to really affect...
Well, make a motion, and then you can make a motion to defer, or whatever you want to do.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the City Council approve in second reading ordinance number 131745, increasing water rate, providing a date for public hearing and establishment of effective date.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bob, did you want to say anything?
Yeah. First of all, as was discussed earlier on in public comments, this motion is for a 22% raise for the fish processors this year. It's not endorsing a 22% raise for the next 10 years. And so, I believe at a minimum, at a minimum, even with negotiations with the fish processors, it's going to be 22%. When you look at Bob Newell's numbers and the fact that it costs us $1,066,000 for services this year to the fish processors, and they paid $190,000, there's an $800,000 subsidy there that the community is making up. The fish processors are a very beneficial industry and a core industry within the community. And I by no means want to tax them unreasonably, or change their rates unreasonably. But they have the best water rates in the state of Alaska as far as the industries are. And the water rates that we have in the community, right now, they're not covering our cost of services. And some of those are unmandated services in regards to water treatment. And my concern is, is if we can't even get a rate that addresses that, we're looking down the line at future operations, which is going to be a $30 million project. We're going to have to put on manpower to do that, and that's going to have to be covered under rates, and that's going to be ignored. But we do need our cover, our cost of treatment, $260 cents of 1,000 gallons, or whatever it is. And I don't want them to pay any more than their fair share, and I would consider even a subsidy, you know, something similar to what we're doing at the shipyard with the power rates, because they are beneficial this year, but an $800,000 a year subsidy, I think, is too much. I think we should move forward with a minimum of 22%.
Deanne?
I just need some clarification, because when I read the information, and it says this would be accomplished by raising water rates for the fish processors by 22% annually for the next 10 years.
It's not in the ordinance, though.
I can comment, Mr. Mayor.
It's just misleading, and it's confusing.
We were asked to bring forward a revised ordinance. We were asked to essentially bring something forward, a plan that would eliminate the subsidies of the fish processors. To do that, we would have to increase rates 22% for 10 years. We can only deal with one year at a time in an ordinance, so this would be year one, doesn't obligate the council to do anything in years two through 10. That's something that future councils will have to wrestle with as you go forward.
I do realize that this is something we've been struggling with for a while, and we all saw the presentation and the numbers, and I understand that there are some inequities that need to be balanced out, but I do struggle with the time of year that this came up in the first reading, and how the people that it would be affecting most were notified. And I really would hope that we could move to postpone it a bit longer and have some more conversations with all those involved.
Is that a motion to defer?
Correct.
And how far do you want to defer? One week, two weeks, three weeks?
Two weeks.
Okay.
First meeting in March, then?
First meeting in February.
February. I mean, February, excuse me.
Okay, we have a motion to defer to...
Snug in that.
Oh, thank you. We have a motion to defer to the first week in February. Call or roll, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. That will be back on our agenda on the first meeting in February, and between that time, we'll be discussing everything with the fish processors. Yes.
I would just like to see some discussion about conservation as well. Ways that they could potentially conserve the treated water that they're receiving.
Okay. We'll put that on the topic. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Yes, Dick?
As we do that, I'd also like to see if Bob could provide us with the total amount of money the processors give us for that. So we're looking at total pot and I'd like to see how it affects each one of those segments of that pot, like how much it is tied in, that pay us if that's disposable. Or maybe it's just fish processors as a total. How much do they pay and then what is this gonna increase by on a per month basis, I can understand.
Okay. Alright, that brings us to, go ahead, Bob.
Do we have any idea when we're gonna set this date? We have something on. How do you wanna handle that?
I was gonna let the management get a hold of it.
We'll contact the fish processors and see if we can schedule a meeting.
And I believe, Bob, you're involved with that too. Yeah, yeah. Excellent. Alright, that brings us down to seven B one, Ketchikan Public Utilities, Offer Employment Electric Division Manager to Andy Donato. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to override the General Manager Office position of Electric Division Manager to Andy Donato of Ketchikan, Alaska, based on a compensation level of grade seven dash A four step T at the annual salary of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bob?
Yes, Your Honor, um, I've had the pleasure of working with Andy on a number of different projects, including on CIPA, uh, Board. He represents the community very well and he's very knowledgeable about our system and its operation. As, uh, one comment in regards to the salary, I think it's unfair to, um, compare a professional employee to an elected official. If that were the case, we'd reduce him to garbage man wages because the mayor's paid.
Mayors are underpaid.
We, we just finished a, we just, we just, we just finished a survey, um, with a nationwide company in regard to CEOs and the range in a particular area similar to Andy's is a hundred and twenty-three to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Similar sized utility, same amount of money as we were doing in a particular operation, so I don't think it's unreasonable. But again, I think that to try to do that with, with our two elected officials, our state representatives don't make anywhere near that either. But again, I wanna voice my support for Andy and make his right choice. Thank you.
Deanne?
I am so heartily support, um, the decision for this, um, for Andy to fill his position. I do have some concerns with the increase in salary and it's, and by no means being disrespectful to Andy in that regard. It's, I'm separating the two, you know, um, but you know, we've just gone through a budget process. We've had a lot of flack and feedback from people about, um, having to increase taxes and not addressing our spending habits. But then here, you know, just a breath after we go through all that, we're, um, you know, substantially increasing, um, a salary. I guess what I wanted to find out was what the position, what, what was the pay for, um, the previous employee in that position when he left?
Comparable pay?
To what Andy is starting out at?
No, to what Andy would be making if the salary level is approved. He'd be making the same thing as Mr. McConnell.
Yeah, I just need to clarify, the same thing as Mr. McConnell when he started in the position or after his years in the position?
Mr. McConnell was appointed at the R step, which was the maximum step at the time he was appointed. The council subsequently approved increasing the steps of the compensation plan, I believe, out to you. And, uh, Mr. Donato has requested replacement at step T.
I just, you know, I, I struggle because, again, I feel as Dick mentioned earlier that there are some things in the budget that maybe we could have put some more muscle into. We've already identified the fact that we have some struggles with the, um, income portion of the budget. I'm just struggling with increasing the payouts on the other side of the coin. Um, I don't know how you balance those two arguments. I am not by any means suggesting that he's not valued or worth that or, um, doesn't have the experience or the expertise and wouldn't do a fabulous job. It has nothing to do with personalities or anything like that. It's just simply a matter of, we just sat here for months, you know, beating the budget up and getting beat up by the public and hearing from the public about increased costs and increased taxes. But then we just, um, we, you know, we have these things on the table that we, we don't really address.
Bottom line is.
We had to go out and hire in, yes.
You will not find a qualified candidate on the open market for the salary we can offer. That's the reality of the situation.
I definitely hear what you're saying, but at what point is this not sustainable anymore? I mean, we just keep doing it. And I am, I'm not disagreeing that that's, you know, probably what we would find, but at some point, where's the camel gonna be broken? Where, where are we gonna just, you know, are we gonna be bankrupt? Because something's gotta give. Um, you can only get so much blood from a turnip. Um, we have a limited demographic and population. We have limited, um, employment opportunities here with pretty low wages overall. Um, you know, we're either gonna lose, um, population or businesses. You know, if we have to keep increasing taxes and stuff to keep supporting these increases over and over and over again, what point do we draw a line in the sand? I, I personally don't know where that is. You know, we heard from Mr. Shaw earlier about, um, our spending problem. And you know, I recognize that there is a component of that. But on the other side of that coin, to alleviate that spending problem by not increasing taxes, we're looking at laying off employees, which then has a trickle-down effect because they're not spending money in the community, they're not spending money for rent, utilities. You know, there's no, there's, I just can't see a win in any direction. But something will have to give, one way or the other. I mean, it's just not going to be sustainable long-term.
Marty?
Yeah, so Mr. Donato would make the same thing as Mr. McConnell?
Well, I'm not sure whether, uh,
Close to it?
Tim was either you or, or he or you. I'm not, I'm not sure.
So we're not increasing the budget?
No, no, the position was fully funded at Mr. McConnell's.
At the budget that we, okay.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Zingy?
Aye.
Severson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Coos?
Okay, that passes six to nothing. Six to one. I'll catch it on here pretty soon. That brings us down to H vouchers, Ketchikan Daily News eighty-seven hundred thirty-six point six eight. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move for approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
I feel like I'm on a roll. I stop now, but yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Harris?
Thinking about it. I'll say yes.
Thank you, Detective.
Severson?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Hey, that passes seven to nothing. It brings us down to Managers' Report. Carl, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple briefly, Mr. Mayor. As I'm sure you're aware, we had a pretty significant fire over the weekend on Edmund Street. Our department did a supportive job in addressing that and managed to be able to save the two adjacent structures. Frank and his crews deserve a lot of credit. Someone who probably didn't get equal credit, you know, was one of our public works employees by the name of Tom Gaffney, who was driving through town at the time, things were starting to get pretty intense. And on his own initiative, he saw that we were gonna be into some serious flooding in the downtown area if we didn't start getting catch basins cleared and, and he did that. And probably, uh, saved some significant property damage, so I wanna give Tom some kudos.
Thank you.
The other, um, we meet again next, next week. You'll have a number of reports before you that will have been authored by our contracts, Grand Administrator, Morgan Berry, who will be leading us to accept a position in the borough. And I just wanna recognize Morgan for all the superior work he has done on the city's behalf. Uh, Morgan, it's been a privilege and you will be missed. And, um, just kudos to Mr. Berry. That's all I can.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody have any questions on the, any other items on the, on the Managers' Report? I saw the ISO rating, that was nice.
Can I just make a comment?
You bet.
On the Emergency Management Committee that I'm, I've been appointed to, there will be some, um, items brought to the council in the coming months regarding the new, um, agreement that's being put together by the commi, um, by the committee. Some of it might be pertinent in terms of, um, some changes they're wanting to make in that direction. There's a ninety-two page report, so it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a, um, a struggle, but, um, I just wanted to let people know that there might be some things that we need to address with that coming up in the next few weeks, months.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, that brings us down to City Clerk's file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney's file. Future addend items? Yes.
Uh, the artist that, uh, had the proposal for the range age, you're requesting a response from the City Council?
I have it sitting right here.
Alright.
I was going to, um, just respond to it as the mayor, if you guys want me to make it as official. It was just going to be an explanation letter of what the council, um, did change their mind and more emphasis was going towards the, we wanna work on the waterfront promenade down there by Thomas Basin where we had that emergency. Um, if anybody has a problem, I can switch it and make sure you guys all have a letter, otherwise I'll just send it as the mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You bet. Where are we? Uh, Mayor and Council comments. KJ?
I've got a couple of comments.
Please.
Number, first thing I wanted to mention is the excellent job the Fire Department, as Carl said, did on this Edmunds fire. I mean, these guys got their butts out and stopped a major catastrophe. Fire Department did a great job. Wanna switch over from there. We wanted it, we gotta pay for it. I'm topping the library, I'm topping the Fire Department, all that kinda stuff. Quarter of the population of the city voted, I believe, it was real close to the number. They voted for this stuff. We got to pay for it. I move, I'll be real honest, if I had my brothers, we'd have done this one percent all year. Just so we'd have some backup money going in for the wastewater and all that kinda stuff. The other thing that I spent my Christmas holiday debating whether I was gonna stay on this council is I was just to the point of being pretty well fed up with comments that I'd hear from my constituents, say I can only speak for myself. But I made the mistake of stopping at the Arctic and talking to Paula. I hate Paula. I hate Paula 'cause she's right. And, uh, I think the bottom, bottom line that came out of there, we had a lot of different comments from a lot of different people. I think people need to be very careful what they say. I'm not at all trying to censor anybody or tell them they can't say it. But if you're gonna call us dumbasses, you know, be sure that's what you mean, 'cause the same people that, I hate to use that word, 'cause I don't have a problem with it. The same people that call us that will come back in two months and wanting to know if we'll give their, their little organization twenty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars. And I wanna remind them, I'm on that committee. Things that you folks said to us both directly and then I got secondhand from other people, just kinda makes me think, well, if we wanna operate like that, I'd just say no to everybody. But you don't run a business like that. I understand that. I just want everybody to know, it was a long Christmas for me, but I've decided I'm gonna ride this thing out.
Very happy hour. Bob?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Marty?
Yeah, I'm glad KJ decided to stay. I had to take him to dinner, but but I'm glad that Paula, no, clearly I have nothing to do with your decision, but I'm glad Paula talked to you. So that was good. Also, I had something else and I don't remember what it was, so, no. Oh, wait, Community Agency Funding meets Monday and that'll involve KJ and Judy and I and two members of the public, Dragon London and Shauna Lee. So we'll meet Monday and then we'll meet two Mondays from that and we'll have a recommendation to the City Council.
Meeting time is three thirty?
Meeting time is three thirty Monday morning.
Alright. Matt?
I've forgotten several things with the last couple meetings, so, no.
Deanne?
Nothing.
Judy?
KJ, I'm glad you're staying on and I was very grateful for that break over Christmas because I have to say, there was a couple of times I questioned why the heck I ran for this in the first place myself. But, you know, I've had the break and we'll carry on.
Dick? You get the final word.
Thanks, thanks again. I've had the same thoughts both these two ladies, lady and the gentleman had. Well, most of this stuff, it gets a little bit old, so, anyway, thanks again. I'll do my best.
Alright. I have a few comments. First of all, I wanna say I love Paula. I don't hate her like KJ. I appreciate Tom Gaffney's work. Uh, Morgan Berry, I'm gonna miss ya. I really enjoyed having you on, um, the city staff. Dick, welcome back. The Fire Department, um, they did a great job. I know that was a tough job. I, um, I almost got in the way. A whole bunch of us ran up Edmunds Street stairs. We got there early. They turned on the fire hose and we almost got all knocked off Edmunds Street 'cause it just came straight through. Next meeting, I mean Carl, since it's next week, um, what are we looking at? You got a, did you save a whole bunch of stuff for next week or?
We, we have a fair amount.
Hackets will be out.
Hackets will be out tomorrow.
Okay, alright. I have nothing to add. Um, we have no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So move. Thank you, everybody.